Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. I'd like to ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock.
Here.
Councilman Amador.
Here.
Press your button, thank you. Councilman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson. Councilman Benson. Councilman Mackel Downey. Councilwoman Elliott.
Present.
Councilman Douglas.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we have...
Steve, your button please.
A few council members missing as the fact that we are having an early start to the meeting because we have an executive session to conduct. We have Mr. Benson is not here, as well as Mr. Mackel Downey. However, Councilwoman Carson will not be here all night. The other two will show up and I'll make adjustments to the record when we come back into the regular session. But before we move forward, I know Councilwoman Carson's out with some family medical issues this evening. I'd like to ask for a motion to excuse her. Mr. Bullock.
Move to excuse Councilwoman Carson from tonight's special meeting and the meeting.
All of it, correct. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow Councilwoman Carson to have a excused absence for medical issues for tonight's meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now I will ask, I am open for a motion to enter into an executive session. Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Move, excuse me. Move to move into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, 4-E for the purpose of determining positions and develop strategy for negotiation with Adams County regarding the number of municipal inmates housed at the Adams County Jail.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Teeter.
Second please.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to go into executive sessions for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We will go into executive session with the intent to be back out here at 6:30 PM just to reconvene the regular meeting.
Okay, tell Mr. Mackel Downey.
Let the record show that Mr. McAldoney is now with us, because he was not here at the beginning of the meeting when we called the roll, as well as Mr. Benson. He was not with us when we called the roll. So as long as the record will reflect that those two are both here, and Councilwoman Carson will be absent throughout the entire meeting, and we've already excused her for that absence. So, is the clerk ready for the meeting to resume? Clerk?
She's in the booth.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence. Please keep in your prayers. Shirley?
Shirley.
Yeah, Shirley Leeper, longtime resident who passed away this last week. And then we'll follow up by...
Tim Palumbo.
Tim Palumbo?
Yeah, he passed away, and his funeral was Friday, too.
Okay, thanks, Renee. And then we'll follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the staff, please pass the microphone around and have the audience introduce themselves.
Bruce Riley.
Pam Sfrattler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Ed Pearlmutter.
Hannah Mullen.
Maxine Delendo.
Sandy Gruhl.
Ellen Howe, Board of Adjustment.
Maria Zibia.
Kiher Musarli.
Jean Raffel, Board of Adjustment.
Joy Bishop.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Delilah Collins.
Jim Starling.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Walt Williams, Economic Development.
Sam Schwartz.
David Foster.
Troy Whitmore with United Power.
Tom Green with United Power.
Dave Minos, Police Department.
Chuck Baker, Police Department.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Gary Barber, Frederick, Police Department.
Thank you. I have one other announcement. Today is our city clerk's birthday, so I'd like to wish her a happy birthday. Happy Birthday, Laura. Next item, I'd like to recognize that Congressman Pearlmutter is here with us today, and I'd like to ask him if he wants to come up to the podium and say a few words before I get into Citizen Communication.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just here to, I make an annual visit to, you know, just see how things are going in Commerce City, to listen to a little bit of your public comment and some of the issues that are in front of you. Obviously, DC, I think, doesn't work quite as well as Commerce City works. I wish it did, and it will. I mean, as my dad would say, the gridlock that we have in Washington right now, he would say, "This too shall pass." I just hope it hurries up and passes quickly. And it really is kind of frustrating, because we aren't getting some things done that would benefit the citizens of your town. And, you know, particularly some transportation issues. We haven't passed the transportation bill yet. We can't even pass a farm bill. There are a lot of ideological clashes taking place. I mean, some things are moving forward. I feel like the economy generally has been improving. We heard today that there was a slight uptick in unemployment in Colorado because of the budget cuts. The sequester at the federal level now is causing some additional unemployment. The private sector seems to be stronger, but at the government level, we're sort of going backwards a little bit. But, you know, we'll work it out. We'll fight it out eventually. If we can't work it out in Washington, the people will have the right to decide a year from now. And we'll see exactly what direction they'd like to take. But, we've got some things that are moving forward. We've had town hall meetings. You've been kind enough to let me use your chambers for an Affordable Care Act Town Hall that we had a year and a half ago. Colorado is way ahead of the rest of the country. When this exchange opens for individuals and small businesses, we're going to find that we have many more plans available that compete with one another, that will be available to folks who never had the chance to get insurance before. So we feel that that's a big step forward. Obviously, the key piece that I think is a civil rights component of it is that people with pre-existing conditions can't be discriminated against anymore. And as many of you know, you know, I have a daughter with epilepsy, and clearly, she's uninsurable. But for this act will, you know, benefit her and millions and millions of other people across the country. We have, I've been up in the city a bunch lately. I was at the Salud Clinic Thursday or Friday of last week. That's a tremendous facility, you know, right across the street. I was, I had a government and a grocery, and then we had a business roundtable. Steve, I think you were at that a week or two ago. So, and Renee, you were there as well. And I just, you know, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you all may have. Otherwise, I'm here just to kind of watch what's going on and take the pulse of your constituents.
Great. Thank you very much for being here. It's an honor to have you stop by once in a while. And we know you're in town a lot doing other things. Does anyone on the council have any questions or comments for the Congressman? Mr. McAldoney?
Thanks so much for your continued representation, strong representation of our community. We really, really appreciate it. Of all the things that we could ask, one that comes to mind, I saw on the way to, or way to work, way to counsel tonight. I know you're involved in the train noise initiatives, among many others. And as I was making my way down Highway 2 tonight to counsel, the train approaching 96th there along Highway 2 blasted its horn probably half, started halfway between 104th and 96th and continued on through the intersection. And so, that's obviously a key intersection in the discussions. We've obviously done well to this point with silent crossings, but I know you're helping to carry that further. Maybe you could let us know and let the citizens know where we stand on that effort.
Well, I should let the citizens know that you all have brought that to my attention, that we together are working with, I think it's the Federal Transit Administration, to try to quiet that entire intersection. And they, there are other places along the line where they've done precisely what we want them to do there. I feel pretty good that we'll get something accomplished.
Thanks for your...
So we just got to keep knocking on that door.
Appreciate your support.
And one thing I would like to compliment you, your staff, about is the dialogue. And dialogue that we have between our office and your council and your city is really good, and that makes me much better advocate for you all, because we have good line of communication.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, sir, for coming out to Commerce City. You're a very welcome face here, and you don't dodge the real issues, you know. You're able to speak and give answers, and I think the citizens appreciate that. So I appreciate your support for Commerce City.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
I also want to echo Mr. Douglas and Mr. McAdonie's thoughts, and thank you so much for coming. And Mr. McAdonie hit the nail on the head, because I was working out at the rec center yesterday, and a gentleman came up to me and said, "You're a councilman. What are you going to do about the train noise?" And I told him that that is something we're actively working on, but with your help and everything, and Congress, we will succeed in getting all quiet crossings, and maybe the railroads will recognize the fact that in between crossings, they don't just have to go down the tracks blowing their horn to let everybody know they're there, because there's no crossing coming up. But thank you so much for being here this evening.
Hey, thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yeah, thanks for being here tonight, and I don't want to raise another issue, but do you have anything new to say on the Tower Road off-ramp?
I was just going to say that, you know, we're working on it. You all are working on it. I feel like that one is the least sticky of the wickets that we have with it, you know, the overall airport project. And I know that the mayor's been involved in all of this, and, you know, I'm very happy that things have sort of quieted down. We're not reading about a lot of things in the newspaper right now, which hopefully means that the interested parties on the bigger project are talking. I know that the Tower Road on-ramp onto Peña, you know, we've, we definitely have the ear of the Transportation Department on that. So both federal, as well as the state. I know Denver is very interested in doing something on that and working with Commerce City. And the FAA gave us really kind of a fair hearing and meeting to get something done. So I feel pretty good about that component of things. The rest of it, there's a lot of discussion and negotiation that has to go forward, and, you know, a lot of that's between Aurora and Denver and Adams County in Denver, but I feel like Commerce City is going to be able to work something out, really at the beginning of this thing, and hopefully not get held up by the rest of it.
On that top...
But you would know more than I do, because you've been working on it day to day, so...
Well, on that topic, I think the important things are, we'll be under design by the end of the year on the ramp. We're continually working with Denver to take care of the revenues that are lost, or the loss in fee because of the maintenance of Peña Boulevard being an FAA road, which are completely separate and aside from this airport issue that we're dealing with, with the other jurisdictions. And tomorrow is a Airport Coordinating Committee meeting, and we'll see how that goes, but we continually are moving it forward. Hopefully, we'll get to some resolve on both issues soon. But Denver has been very easy to work with trying to work out this issue on the ramp.
Yeah, and as the mayor knows, I mean, I feel like whether it's simply on the Tower Road component of this, so Commerce City, Denver, with the FAA kind of involved, or it's sort of the Adams County slash Aurora side, Denver, Areatropolis, airport project, development of the whole region, I think if we can just, everybody can sit down and work out, you know, work together quietly, not so much behind the scenes, but not have to take things directly to the newspaper. And I'm sure there's a reporter or two in here wondering what the heck I'm talking about right now. I mean, obviously, I think that the negotiations will bear fruit. They'll take a while. This is a major development. This is a major piece of negotiation, if you're looking at the entire development of the region. But I know we can do it. I know that it's a better, as a metropolitan area, we'll be better off for it.
I would agree. Councilwoman Elliott?
Just want to thank you, Congressman Pearlmutter, for being here this evening. As always, I'll echo what Councilmember Douglas said, that you're a welcome face in the community. I just want to thank you truly, one, for being here this evening, but also for your continued strong representation of Commerce City. You know, it's always a matter of anything that we ask you, we approach you with different issues that we have, and you're just right on target with everything. You're right alongside with us, and I appreciate that. And I continue to look forward to working with you and building a stronger coalition, if you will. So, thank you again.
Which, and thank you for reminding, one, it's fun to represent you all. I, you know, you have a lot of different subjects, from, you know, wildlife refuges, to fast tracks, to, you know, healthcare issues, highway issues and the like. And so, one of the things that I did recently, I talked to Anthony Fox, who's the new Secretary of Transportation, and I also talked to him about the new line coming up here north. And so, I've definitely invited him to come see exactly what all we're working on, and I want to make sure that that thing continues to move forward as it's been moving.
Great. Mr. Amador?
Thank you also, Mr. Congressman. I do definitely thank you for your support in the transportation piece. There is a difference between blowing your horn as a courtesy of the train and going all the way down the line and blowing that thing obnoxiously. So I know we've outreach to you, you've outreach back to us, so thank you. Please continue to work on that.
And we will definitely, I mean, Hannah's hearing this, I will, when I get back in, right after Labor Day, we'll bring that to the transit authorities, the Transit Administration's attention again, and just try to get this thing buttoned down.
Great. Thanks again for being here. I think that's everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it when you stop by.
All right. See y'all.
Take care.
Thank you, Bob.
Next, I'd like to call forward Gary Barber from the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police to make the presentation to Chief Smith.
Welcome and thank you for coming down from Firestone to do this.
Frederick, I'm sorry. I get the tri-county area gets me.
Happens all the time, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mayor Ford and members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Gary Barber. I'm Chief of Police in Frederick, and I'm here on behalf of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm the chairperson of the Professional Standards Committee and a board member in the CACP. My purpose is to present Chief Troy Smith with a certificate from the Colorado Police Chiefs and the Sheriff's Associations, verifying that the Commerce City Police Department has met the state standards for accreditation. There are 232 law enforcement agencies in Colorado. Only about 18% of these agencies are accredited. It's not an easy process, and it involves a lot of work and commitment by the entire department. In order to become an accredited law enforcement agency, the Commerce City Police Department had to meet some 186 mandatory professional standards and several optional standards, which were verified by an onsite assessment by law enforcement officials from other jurisdictions serving on the CACP Professional Standards Committee as professional assessors. Your police department met or exceeded all of the established standards. You're going to be very proud of your police department and its employees. Chief Troy Smith and his staff are committed to providing quality law enforcement services to your community. On behalf of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police and the County Sheriff's of Colorado, it's my pleasure to present the Commerce City Police Department and Chief Troy Smith with their accreditation certificate.
A good deal of work went in, as the chief alluded to, achieving this accreditation process, and I'd like to recognize Commander Munoz, who's here in the audience tonight, who spent a great deal of time codifying our policy and procedure manual to ensure that we complied with all of these standards. Commander Baker was also instrumental in the onsite assessment process the day the assessors were at the department. So I'd like to thank my staff, who worked really hard to make sure that we got through this successfully, so thank you.
Well, just second there, Chief. One of the things that I think all of us on council heard a year and a half to two years ago when we were running for office, from the officers within the department, is that we didn't have an accreditation program anymore. And I think it speaks a lot for you and your department to go out and pursue getting the accreditation put back into place so that our officers feel like they're part of that bigger opportunity. So kudos to you and your commanders and staff for going out and pursuing the accreditation, and thank you very much for, Chief, for coming down and honoring us with accreditation. Anyone else have anything?
Thank you.
Saying none, thank you very much. Brian, you want to get a picture?
We would love to have council come down briefly for a photo with Chief Smith and Chief Barber.
Okay. Next, we have the Safe Net Clinic Week Proclamation. Community Health Services Executive Director Norma Portnoy will be present. Are you here, Norma? Yep. Great. Bob, you want to read the proclamation?
I will. Commerce City, Colorado proclamation. Whereas there are 45 community safety net clinics, including Community Health Services, and 50 federally certified rural health clinics located throughout Colorado. And whereas these clinics were created by civic-minded individuals, healthcare professionals and systems, churches, and other community organizations who recognize there are countless individuals in need of access to medical services. And whereas Colorado clinics annually provide about 750,000 visits to approximately 300,000 residents. And whereas clinics provide essential medical treatment and preventive services to vulnerable populations in communities throughout our state, including a majority of uninsured or underinsured patients. And whereas the 45 community safety net clinics often lack human, technical, and sustainable financial resources, yet create innovative solutions to delivering patient-centered, high-quality care in an efficient and effective manner. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim August 19 through August 23, 2013, as Safety Net Clinic Week in the city of Commerce City, recognizing that clinics such as Community Health Services provide essential healthcare services to Colorado's underserved populations. And be it further resolved that the city expresses our appreciation and gratitude to clinics throughout Colorado and their staff for dedicating time, energy, and resources to serve their communities.
Thank you. Norma, do you have anything you want to present before I open it up for a motion?
Well, first, I'd like to introduce Maria Zubia. She's our Director of Outreach, Enrollment, and Resources, and has been for like 10 years. She's an esteemed member of the community and of our agency. And I want to thank you for making this a formal proclamation. At Community Health Services, we serve about 3,500 children. We do about 9,000 healthcare visits a year. And then there, as he said, about another 100 safety net clinics around the state that provide similar services. So we are that safety net that helps these children and adults in Colorado. So thank you.
Great, thank you. I am open for a motion. Mr. McAdonie?
So moved.
Mr. Bullock?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Proclamation is approved. Will the council join me down front, please, to present the proclamation? There were two sign-up sheets this evening. One is for the QCI ballot issue, which many of you have signed up for. The other one is the Citizen Communication one that I have two people that have signed up for, but you signed up for both, and I just want to make sure, are you on one, or the other, or both? Both? Perfect. When I call your name, please go forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I'll start with, well, you're both together, right? Troy and Tom, you want to come on up from United Power? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Congressman Pearlmutter. It's great to be here. I'm Troy Whitmore with United Power, 500 Cooperative Way, Brighton, Colorado. And with me are new Community Affairs Rep that serves this area, Tom Green. Hopefully, most, if not all of you in this, at least, front half of the room have met Tom. If not, you will be soon. We will be visiting with you a little bit later on the other matter, Mr. Mayor, but we had a fun job tonight, and we do this usually every year, and that's the issuance of your Patriot's Capital Check, your earnings, as part of the United Power Cooperative. So we're pleased to present that to you tonight. I'm going to let Tom talk about the specifics of that. But I wanted to make another comment in regard to part of the formula of capital credits, based upon your usage and your rates and that combination. And as you all know, especially these folks, rates are tremendously important to the city, whether it's pumping at the golf course or facilities like streetlights. And I noticed on Highway 2, we have one to fix for you just south of 104, so we'll get that done in the next couple of days. But rates are a component of the formula, the good news, bad news side of things. So we're very cognizant of rates, and we did have a little bit of a rate change from our wholesaler this year, which Tom and the other gentleman on my staff that work with members spread the word on the changes. For, by and large, for most of the accounts that we serve in Commerce City, it was a negligible change, which is good news. But, want to talk about rates. One of the components of rates that is a pressure situation for us is regulation, and what we see as hyper-regulation, both at the federal level and here in Colorado. And since Congressman Pearlmutter's here, I wanted to give a shout-out to him and his staff. We recently had a vote in Washington asking Congress to, if you will, kind of send a little message to the EPA. They've been upping the standards on coal ash regulations, and wanted to make it a hazardous substance. Now, we've had coal ash in our cement and in our roadways, in our wallboard for many, many years. It's been used for a lot of very valuable building trades. So to have it regulated in a different manner, to be considered as a hazardous waste, means higher rates in the long run. Mr. Pearlmutter was... Mr. Pearl Mutter was very brave in bucking his own party, crossed party lines, and voted the way that tri-state generation and United Power had asked him to, to send the message to the EPA, let the states handle it. And that's the message that was sent. So, kudos to Ed and Hannah. Thank you so much. We appreciate your support. I know it wasn't easy.
I didn't ask him to do this.
Oh, he didn't? He did not? I asked him to stay because I wanted to honor him with that shameless plug, but it's not a shameless plug. It's the gospel, so we appreciate it.
Hey, it worked out perfect. You invited him here, you know, he shows up on the night that you're going to come tell us how good a job he's doing? Perfect, Congressman. I like it.
Uh-oh, time's up.
No, you're still good.
The good news, Tom has a big check, so maybe that'll buy us a couple more minutes. So, Patriot's Capital, again, we're a cooperative. We allocate a certain amount of funds each and every year, and then out of that allocation, we retire a certain amount that we can afford to retire. The rest of that allocation is used for plant additions to keep our borrowing as minimal as possible. So, we're pleased to say that we have retired three-point-five million dollars this year. Unfortunately for your folks, that's not all coming here to Commerce City tonight, but a big portion is in his hands. And a lot of smaller checks, I've talked to a couple of your constituents that have received their checks this weekend. So, a few folks had a little bit better weekend with their Patriot's Capital check. So, with that, I'll yield the floor to Tom to talk specifics. Thank you for your time.
Hey, I got my twenty-nine bucks. I just hope this one's a little better.
A few.
Tom?
It's much better, Your Honor.
Thank you.
We like to demonstrate the cooperative difference, and that's why we like to come down here and make a show of it. We try to operate in the least cost possible. And so, tonight, I am happy to deliver you a check for eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. So...
Great, thank you.
Last year, I think, we gave it to your attorney. We were thinking about the police chief, but he left. Would you like it, Mr. Mayor, or would Mr. Manager like it?
You know what? I got to be careful about giving money to some of them folks. We know up here, up on the dial...
All right. All right. It's all yours, buddy.
We do have a finance director.
There he is. There's Roger.
Is working his fingers back there.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's our pleasure.
Thank you for coming in.
We enjoy working with your staff and your citizens here in Commerce City. Good job.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes. I have a motion for August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen minutes. Mr. McAdonny?
Moved to approve the meeting minutes for the special meeting of August twelfth, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Seconded.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item before us this evening is the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. Any council member may ask to have one of these items removed for a separate discussion and vote. This request does not require a motion or a vote. Does any member of the council wish to remove an item that's on the consent agenda this evening? Mr. Bullock?
I was here for motion.
In a moment. Does any member want to remove an item? Saying none? I'm open to a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. McAdonny.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Attorney, please read the titles.
Title of Resolution two thousand and thirteen dash fifty-two reads as follows. Resolution submitting to the electors of the city of Commerce City at the regular election to be held November five, two thousand and thirteen, the question of whether section three-point-one of the city charter of the city of Commerce City should be changed to provide that regular municipal elections shall be held as coordinated elections in Adams County, Colorado, held in odd-numbered years and setting the language therefore. Title of ordinance nineteen-seventy-one reads as follows. An ordinance amending the two thousand and thirteen budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance of the general fund in the amount of one-hundred-eighty-six thousand, forty-six dollars, and transferring a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the general fund to the following. Grant fund in the amount of thirty-seven thousand dollars and the facility services fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, two-hundred dollars. Transferring one million dollars from the solid waste fund to the CIPP fund. Five-hundred-sixty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars from the impact fees fund to the CIPP fund, and appropriating a portion of the unencumbered fund balance in the CIPP fund in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. The fleet management fund in the amount of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Urban renewal authority fund in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. And the police donation fund in the amount of thirty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, for a total amount of two million, four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, and reaffirming prior appropriations and authorizing the expenditure thereof. That's the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. As the record shows, the motion's approved. Eight in favor, one abstention, or excused absence, I'm sorry. Next, we have Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-two. Is there any council member that has any questions regarding this resolution? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? Saying none? Excuse me, Mr. Benson?
Did you say twenty thirteen fifty-two?
Twenty thirteen dash fifty-two.
Oh, forty-nine.
Well, my paperwork says fifty-two. Twenty thirteen dash forty-nine. Businesses' incentives for TMAC two enterprises. You're correct, Mr. Benson, forty-nine. I'm open for a motion.
I got it.
Mr. Bullock?
Moved to introduce Resolution twenty thirteen dash forty-nine.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to introduce or to approve Resolution twenty thirteen dash forty-nine. Mr. Gallagher, please read the title.
Title reads, Resolution approving business and development incentives for TMAC number two enterprises LLC.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item is Resolution twenty thirteen dash fifty-one. Mr. McBroom, you would like to introduce that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a significant night for the Commerce City Council. That does not mean this is an easy item to act upon. The city council's been actively engaged in this issue since the beginning of the year, and prior to that, a dedicated group of stakeholders in the Commerce City community have been actively engaged in solving some significant challenges that face the Commerce City community. Prior to the city council discussing this resolution or hearing comments from the public who are here in attendance tonight, we'd like to provide a very brief overview of the process that's led us to this point, and Michelle Halsted is here to do that.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
So, over the last two years, you've heard from residents and neighbors on the types of investments that are critical to improving our quality of life in Commerce City, given a growing population and increased demand for services. In two thousand and eleven, council chartered the QCI, or Quality Community Initiative Stakeholder Group, comprised of residents, businesses, nonprofits, and staff to make recommendations on how best to achieve the city's vision. This enterprise held fourteen group meetings, surveyed the community on project preferences, and held thirteen community meetings to get feedback. They presented recommendations to you in January of two thousand and thirteen, and after your February retreat, you've met monthly to get more information about the specific projects, various revenue options, and request more information. You held outreaches in April to get further input on parks and recreation facilities. You conducted a fifteen-minute live telephone survey to gauge support and supplement that work that was held in June. And we also just recently did town hall meetings and another online survey. Throughout this process, the community has made it clear that certain values and neighborhood needs need to be protected. First, parity in geography, making sure that the investments are made throughout the community, not in a specific area. Parity in access to programs and infrastructure. Residents of all ages should have the ability to take advantage of local programs and good roads without going to another community. Fairness and contribution. From residents to visitors, businesses, and employees, it's been important that all users contribute to the costs of any improvements. And finally, sustainable. Whatever city council and the city of Commerce City invests in, we need to be able to operate and maintain it for years to come. So, tonight before you is a determination on whether to refer a one-cent sales tax increase to the November fifth, two thousand and thirteen ballot to build, operate, and maintain five projects over the next five years. A new recreation center with an indoor pool at Second Creek Community Park. The widening of Tower Road from Eightieth to One-hundred-and-third avenues. New additions to the existing recreation center, including a new therapy pool, a seasonal outdoor pool in the southern part of the city, and three new neighborhood parks in Frontera, Turnberry, and the villages of Buffalo Run East. All of these projects have been identified by the community as critical needs to achieve the city's vision. What will this cost? We currently estimate that the total cost of the construction projects will be a little bit more than one-hundred-and-thirty-seven million. This includes the concepts that have been presented throughout the community, but we expect significant public engagement in designing the final spaces and amenities. It's also important that we're able to maintain and operate what we build. We've learned the lessons of other local communities who sought bond and capital improvement projects that didn't include what are known as those O and M costs. And when times got tight, they closed libraries or recreation centers and couldn't meet their commitments. So, the penny increase will not only fund construction of these projects within the next five years, but it will fund the operations and maintenance of road, recreation, and parks improvements in the future. The funds generated by the sales and use tax increase would be earmarked, meaning it could only be used for parks, recreation, and road projects, and only then after the bonds are paid off. So, once the council narrowed the proposal, you sought feedback and input from the community over the last two weeks. You held eight meetings with residents and businesses. Approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-five attendees plus several hundred more were engaged at the neighborhood outreach booth at Fairfax Park. And overall, there's been general support for moving forward on the ballot proposal. You also asked us to produce an online survey, and the survey closed on Friday afternoon before the packet deadline. So, a little bit of an update, we've actually had three-hundred-and-sixty-four participants, but the rest of the percentages you see have held true despite those additional participants. We've seen that ninety-two percent of those who participated believe the investments are necessary to achieve the city's vision. Eighty-five percent believe those investments would improve their quality of life, and seventy-seven percent would definitely vote yes, well, thirteen percent would probably vote yes for an increase if that was referred. Of those who were no's or didn't no's, nearly eighty percent of them said that if they had more information about these items, it would help them better make a decision to support the measure. We had one-hundred-and-eighty-one people provide additional feedback for your consideration. That information was included in the agenda packet and the open-ended question responses that you had late last week. And using a text analysis of those comments, the word cloud that is shown here shows the twenty-eight most-used or important words and phrases that those individuals commented on. So, included in your packet is a resolution that sets the ballot language as follows. I won't read the entire thing. I'll let the city attorney do that later this evening. But essentially, we're asking the tabor question. Shall the city of Commerce City debt be increased by up to one-hundred-and-sixty-six million with a maximum repayment cost not to exceed four-twenty-two? And shall city taxes be increased by up to fifteen million annually in the first fiscal year by a one-percent increase, with the proceeds of such debt and such taxes to be used for the construction, installation, operation, and maintenance of parks, recreation, and roadway improvements, including but not limited to the five projects I previously stated earlier? The ballot language also then goes on to talk about how the debt and the taxes would be used and making sure that it's consistent with the state constitution. So, in closing, after two years of actively reaching out to the community and asking what was needed to maintain and improve the quality of life in Commerce City, we've heard loud and clear that there are five projects at the top of the community's list. These five investments are a mix of new construction and improvements of existing community assets in transportation, parks, and recreation across the city that will benefit all of our residents and neighborhoods for generations. The revenue generated from the new sales and use tax increase can only be used for parks, recreation, and road improvements, from constructions to operations and maintenance. And finally, the initiative provides the reasonable and necessary community investment of all users to build those five projects within those five years, and the resolution provides that additional language. So, with that, it'd be open, city manager, myself, or city attorney, Gaylor, would be open to any questions.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions at this time before I go to the audience? That is so concise. Okay. I do have a list I'm going to start with here. Bear with me, because I've been trying to figure out some of the names, and since some people wrote in a manner that I can't read, you may only get the first name. I'm going to start off with Sue. Sue, sign up. There you go. Perfect. Schwartz, thank you. Please come forward. I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Sue Schwartz, one-zero-zero-seven-four Carson Way. I just want to state, I grew up in this area. We had, we didn't even have paved roads back there, so I think it's a great thing if we can get everybody on board with this. I think it's going to help the children have something to do also on both ends of the town. And then, of course, Tower Road definitely needs something. And that's all.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'll ask Tom Green and Troy Whitmore to come back up. I would imagine you're going to stay with your team. No?
I think I've spoken enough.
All right, we'll just get, we'll just get Tom then.
Thank you. We at United Power have always believed in growing the community and promoting quality of life, safety, and economic development in and around the areas we serve. We participated in the QCI efforts for two years and feel that these proposals meet the goals of this effort. We support bringing the issue before the public and letting the voters decide on these worthwhile projects.
Thank you very much. Sandy Carruthers?
Mr. Mayor and council members, well, first, I want to put myself on the record. I was a member of the QCI committee, so I've had the advantage, or maybe the disadvantage, depending on how you look at it, of considering this issue for nearly two years now. But I'm also an everyday tax-paying citizen, and my home's in core Commerce City. So, I'm here to ask the council tonight to vote to refer the one-percent sales tax question to the November ballot. I think most of us agree that our city has long-term capital needs in our parks and recreation and transportation infrastructure, and these things have big price tags. And we don't have a lot of revenue options to necessarily fund them. So, I repeat, I'm a tax-paying citizen. Do I like tax increases? Generally not, or speaking, usually not. But in this case, we have a big but. I make a conscious effort to buy local, but I and you, we all pay sales tax eight-to-nine percent on every personal retail and household purchase we make, whether we buy it in Commerce City, Thornton, Brighton, Northland, Denver, wherever. And unfortunately, right now, at this time, most of my sales tax goes to pay for those other cities' revenues, needs, rather than our own. So, I support the sales tax increase. Why? I believe it's an investment that will meet essential park and recreation needs and transportation for our growing population and for both our business and residents' needs. It'll stimulate, hopefully, economic development to increase a diversified retail and business base in Commerce City, and this will ultimately allow me to pay more of my sales tax to CC. I want my sales tax to go to support recreation centers, swimming pools, parks, and... I want my sales tax to go to support recreation centers, swimming pools, parks and recreation facilities, and transportation infrastructure in our own city. I'd a lot rather pay here than pay for Brighton's, for example. We also need to keep in mind our businesses, because they also pay sales and tax, use taxes, and I believe there's mutual benefit for our businesses and other sectors in our community with this. So after the City Council votes to refer this issue to us, I ask you, I urge you, my neighbors, my co-citizens, business members in our community, to think about this, have an open mind, get informed on it, and not reject it out of hand. Yes, if we vote for this and it passes, we will pay an additional 1% sales tax on our purchases made here in Commerce City, but we're still going to be paying that 8% to the other cities for purchases made elsewhere. So my vote will be yes. I want to support a quality community for a lifetime for all Commerce City residents, youth, adults, seniors, and for our businesses, community organizations, churches, and all other important community sectors who also live here with us. Thank you.
Sandy, one moment, Sandy. I want to thank you, first of all, for coming in, but I need you to state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sandy Carruthers, 6951 Commerce City.
Thank you.
6951 Kearney Street, Commerce City.
Thank you, Sandy, for coming in.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Bruce Riley, 988-6-NUCLEUS, Street, Commerce City. We moved here six years ago. We came from a very mature community in California, and were not appalled, but struggling with the fact that there wasn't those kinds of things yet in the northern end. There was Reunion Rec Center, that was it, basically, and a couple little inner-community parks, but not, nothing that, like, what you want to do. But first, let me say thanks to the mayor, to the council, to the staff, to the Quality Committee that put in this long effort to research this and come up with a plan that is going to be significant impact on the lives of everybody in Commerce City, not just us in the north, but the south, because we're all one city. We don't get to separate. We're one city. I definitely will support the 1% sales tax, I have no problem with that. I want to encourage all my friends to do the same. My two questions would be priorities. What if we don't collect enough sales tax to do this in five years? What kind of a priority system do we have set up to cover that? That we're going to do this one, but we're going to have to hold off on that one for another six months or a year until we collect the money? And that's kind of a timeline issue, because if we save five events in five years, is that totally realistic? I don't know. Your people studied it, you know what the, what the tax revenue potential is, I have no concept of a penny. Okay? I don't get that. I can't figure that part out. So that's one thing. The other one, I forgot. But I just want to say that I really support what the Council's doing. I'm very surprised there's so few people here tonight. After all the effort that you went through to do town meetings and meet with people in the neighborhoods, and I think six of us are here tonight, I don't know if you could raise your hands or not, but there aren't very many that came. And that's a little frustrating to me, that there aren't more people that are committed. I came almost straight from work, I won't have dinner till I get home tonight at 8:00 or 8:30, but it's worth it, because I want us to move forward in our city. I want us to do what's right for our population and to support and encourage them. And I vote yes.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Brian, do you want to be the one who's accountable to all five projects in five years, because that's what we're guaranteeing the residents unless there's an active guy? Correct?
Mr. Mayor, you're exactly right. City staff, City Council has committed to completing all five projects in a five-year period. This gentleman raises a good question. What if there isn't enough money? We believe strongly that there will be enough money and that there is enough time to build all five within five years. That will require that we begin all five projects simultaneously, but we're very confident we can complete all five, and that there will be sufficient funds to complete all five within the five-year period.
Thank you. I think that's important to have that on the record. Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Mr. Guillermo Serna, please state your name and address for the record.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado.
Good evening.
In listening to the input when we went to the meetings, and the work that has been taken place, it's taken you guys too long to come to this decision. The investment that is going to come out of this will help Commerce City become one, because we will all be voting for the benefit of our children. When we took on the responsibility of growing this city to six times bigger than we are now, we also take the responsibility of providing services for our children. Take prudence that, yes, our criminals, okay, arrests and all that have gone down, and yes, the youth initiative takes credit for it. But take a look at what's happening on that park here in Commerce City. Kids are there, rather than out in the streets. Kids are there enjoying what's provided for them. Community is there with their children. This is what we also need up north. In this, make sure that we also fulfill not just the bronze of exercise and perspective and community, but also the bronze, how people and how our children are feeling. We have a lot of our children that commit a suicide, but if you, and I'm hoping and praying that this stays the way it is, it's curbed down a little bit because of things like this. They're not at home thinking or not thinking, and I think that this is what we need. So I'm asking each and every one of you, regardless of what you think, to support this, because the community is going to support it. I support it, and you know how I feel about senior citizens and children. If we can't support their needs, we can't support businesses, we can't support anything else, because they are our future, and that's why we're here. And if we're going to foresee the future and perspective of this city growing, fighting against Denver, fighting against every other thing, so that we can get what we need, the businesses will come if we provide for this. So I'm asking each and every one of you to produce a yes on this for the future of our kids and our whole community, and the unity of Commerce City. That's all I got.
Thank you for coming in today. Next, David Foster. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of Council, David Foster, 360 South Garfield in Denver.
Good evening.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you, Mayor and Council members, for believing in a process and believing in the QCI. It was really quite an honor for me to serve as one of the co-chairs, along with Maria, for two years on that project and through the entire process. And it was because you enabled it, and so tonight I give you my thanks for an important process that we undertook over the course of two years. I also want to thank city staff. Having the opportunity to show up for two years, early in the mornings, that staff of yours was always prepared. And I'm going to name some of them, there were many others who needed to be thanked for their time and efforts, but, well, Ms. isn't here any longer, but Ms. certainly was a terrific aide in all of this. Certainly, Michelle and Brian, Roger and Carolyn have all been uniquely qualified and helpful throughout the entire process, and so I just want to extend my gratitude to all of them. I also want to thank some of my new friends, some of whom are here tonight, like Delilah and Sandy, Maria Gonzalez, who's not here tonight, and some of my old friends, like Troy and Leisha, for their time and energy and commitment over the course of the last two years. And the reason why it's important to spend time talking about the process is because I think what we witnessed over the course of the two years is really a good process, it was a real process. It went into the heart of the issues in the city, and really, it resulted in a real proposal. It's not everything that everybody wants. It falls far short of the hundreds of millions of dollars that are still needed, even after we fund this, and I think everybody recognizes that. But really, it became a proposal that represents the very best and the very most-needed projects within this community. And so it is an investment that you are all asking for your community to make, but it's beyond just the residents of this community, because your business community will be making a very significant investment in terms of the sales and use tax as well. And so, to Bruce's comment, that there aren't too many people here, and he's surprised by that, I think it's terrific, because having shown up for many, many years to many, many public hearings, people don't show up when they're happy, and they show up in force when they're really angry. And so I think tonight is a reflection of the fact that you have put in the time and the energy, and that you've given your committee an opportunity to really do the research and the work that they needed to do, and so I'm glad that there are only six people who have signed up, because I think it's a reflection of the process. So parks and recreation really do lend credibility to the kind of quality of life that each and every one of you wants in your community, as I want in my own community, and I think that's important. In transportation, you know Commerce City is uniquely located around so many important transportation hubs, and as the Congressman had said earlier, as it relates to the on-ramp from Tower to Penny, which is a crucial, crucial link, and I know that he hears that a lot, and I know that other folks back in DC hear that a lot. It's a crucial link, and it's even more crucial, because you're about ready to commit $50 to $60 million of your community's money in improving Tower Road North of that interchange. And that's the investment that you're saying to your folks and to the rest of the community and to Denver and to Aurora and to Adams County, this is important to us. And so I can't, again, thank you enough for giving me the opportunity to co-chair this process, and I'm glad that we've been able to put together a proposal that, hopefully, you will unanimously support tonight. So thank you for your time and energy.
Thank you. Now, is there anyone who didn't sign up that is compelled to speak on this resolution before the Council considers it, that is in the audience? Seeing no one, I would like to ask Mr. Gaylor to read one letter that we received from an Amy Gamel.
Gamel.
Gamel. That's what I said, Renee Gamel.
This letter is from Amy Gamel. It's regarding tonight's council meeting, concerning consideration of the ballot measure that's before the council at this time. "To whom it may concern, I would like to attend the City Council meeting today, August 19, 2013, in person, but I am unable to do so. Please consider my comments and your decision regarding the proposed ballot item for the 1-cent tax increase. My husband and I have lived in the northern part of Commerce City for 10 years. We bought our home in Commerce City not because it was the desirable place to live, but because the houses were more affordable. Over the last 10 years, we have seen significant growth in this area, and while it slowed down for a few years due to the economy, is starting to significantly increase again. Unfortunately, we have not seen any noticeable increase in services provided from the city in this area, specifically in parks and recreation. Although I will say that the trails were a great addition and highly used, I do understand the financial restrictions and lack of sales tax revenue for these services, but it's time to take action. Over the past 10 years, we have consistently used the recreation center and activities for our children, mainly for swimming and gymnastics. While we enjoy the great programs and affordable costs, we do not enjoy the distance we have to travel for them to participate. It is 10 miles and 20 minutes one way from the recreation center in Commerce City to our home at 104th Avenue and Chambers. It is important for our children to be involved in these activities, so we make the commute, but it is very time-consuming to drive a total of 20 miles and 40 minutes for a 30-minute swim lesson, or to add this time on to our busy workday two times a week for gymnastics. It is also frustrating to see the large number of participants in these types of activities are from the north part of the city, but we have no other choice, because there are no other options in our area. There is the Reunion Recreation Center, but if you do not live in Reunion, it's not affordable to use the recreation center. In my opinion, the northern part of the city is underserved by the city, especially in respect to parks and recreation. These types of amenities attract people to live in communities and is a great investment on so many different levels. I think adding parks to this area would also be very beneficial to the community and offer more activities for the youth, families, and residents of all ages. Recently, we have been seeing profanities about the police spray painted on fences and signs at the entrance of the Frontera Village Community. I think there are many contributing factors to this, but not having things for children and youth to do is a huge contributor. One last thing to keep in mind is the amount of money people in the northern part of the city pay in property taxes. We have been paying approximately $3,000 a year in property taxes for 10 years. We recently sold our home and are building another home in this area. We have the option to move anywhere, but we're choosing to stay in Commerce City so our children do not have to switch schools, and because we see the potential for the area. Our property taxes at the new home are estimated to be close to $5,000 per year. I realize that most of this money goes to the county, but with property taxes this high, the area should be a more desirable place to live and move to. With all this being said, I'd like to let you know that I fully support the ballot initiative and would be willing to help promote it to voters. If you have any questions or need assistance, please contact me through email or at, and then gives her phone number. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Amy Gamel."
Thank you, Bob. I have a letter I want to read to the Council, and the reason I'm reading this one is because it's from Councilwoman JD Carson, who cannot be here tonight. Says, "Dear Mayor and my Council colleagues, first let me apologize for not being with you tonight in person. Personal matters require me to be with my family this evening instead of a City Council. I've asked for the following remarks to be read onto the record, because tonight you will vote to improve our community for generations to come. As an ardent advocate of this path over the last four years, I need to share why history will positively judge a yes vote to refer the sales tax measure to the voters. Commerce City has doubled in population over the last decade. From our agriculture and our industrial roots, the city has evolved into a diverse community, home to a national and international regional business headquarters, a sports destination, and an affordable place to raise a family. In fact, with 76% of our residents being families, providing amenities that improve the quality of life is more important than ever. The proposed ballot issue addresses longstanding desires of our residents throughout the city, providing access to programs and services that are critical to the success of any community. We need to provide local recreation and park options, so residents don't have to go outside of Commerce City to take swimming lessons or enjoy summer pool time. We need to make sure our older adults have a therapy pool and dry locker rooms. More importantly, we need to make sure there's a dedicated revenue source, so that these new projects can be maintained, operated, and expanded to serve the needs of our growing population, the demand in the future. I want to thank the QCI group and the hundreds of residents and businesses who spent time over the last two years providing City Council with input on what's..." over the last two years providing city council with input on what specific projects were needed and how best to fund them. I want to thank my council colleagues for being thoughtful over the last six months to ensure the proposed projects met the needs of the entire city, and the proposed funding mechanisms, a sales tax will be the fairest way to raise revenue from residents, visitors, and businesses. Finding a way to improve our community through construction of parks and recreation projects has been my passion during my first term on council. I'm proud to have been a part of this process and hope we can finally create a dedicated funding path to build important items that will help us achieve Commerce City's vision of a quality community for a lifetime. I urge my colleagues to vote yes, because I will be doing so in Abstinia. Sincerely, Councilwoman J.D. Carson, Ward 3."
I think that takes care of all of the comment section before I ask and request a motion. So with that said, Mr. Mackeldowney, are you prepared?
I am. Let me get my agenda back up here. I would move to approve Resolution 2013-51.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just decided the wrong item. No, I didn't.
That's right.
I'm sorry, yes, 2013-51.
Thank you. Mr. Benson.
Second to motion.
Have a motion and second on the floor, open for discussion. Mr. Mackeldowney.
Did you want to allow us to go through and comment on this now, or did you want to have us wait?
No, I actually wanted to allow comment before I had Bob read the title and we vote.
Okay.
You guys have heard everything, so now I'm open for any discussion from the council before I ask for Bob to read the title.
Great, I'll be very brief. I want to echo some of the comments that Mr. Foster made tonight. I think it's very important for us to recognize the investment of time from both our staff and our board members, and I would thank Mr. Foster and Ms. Gonzalez and all those members of the QCI that helped put in so much real work over that two-year span. I don't know that folks realize the amount of hours that staff put into preparing for those meetings, as Mr. Foster mentioned, the hours that the committee met, or the hours that council thought about how to approach this, and the time that actually led up to that. I think of the handful of years that I sat on council before we made the decision to proceed with the QCI, and to Mr. Curnas' point, so much of this we would love to see yesterday, but we didn't have a vehicle, we didn't have a mechanism that we could all get around. And I think the point that Mr. Foster made about the process and the beauty of the path that we've taken to get here, I don't think we can give that short shrift. I think it's incredibly important to recognize how we got here, and hopefully others will see upon its ultimate success that this was a model of how to approach these kinds of decisions. In some communities, we could have sat down and council could have come out of a study session and said, "This is what we're going to do." But I think it was incredibly important for us to take the path that we did. Frustratingly long, I think we originally said we wanted this to be a year-long process, and our QCI came back and said, "We need more time to do this right." And we, frustratingly, we wanted to pull the trigger, we wanted things to align perfectly, but it was the right thing to do, to give this process additional time, to give it additional runway. And I think at the end of the day, the fruit that this process has borne is fantastic, and I'm excited about where it sits. I'm excited to see the positive responses from the community as we continue to socialize this effort. I love the fact that people think we should have done it yesterday, and I hope that that translates into a strong turnout, should this make it to the ballot in November. And so, again, my deep thanks to the members of the QCI, to the community that came out and either participated in a survey, or showed up at one of the recent meetings, or showed up along the way at one of the discussions held by the QCI, or gave one of us feedback at an outreach meeting. All of that matters, and I think it goes to a theme that I want to just put a point on, which is, one little step, one little step by anybody in this room, anybody in this community, has a huge impact in your decision to make yourself heard, to give your opinion to those of us that are sitting here to make the decision, to help reinforce that we're making the right decision. And so, thank you to all of you who helped take a step to help move this process along, and I'm hopeful that we see things start to come out of the ground and see those five projects in five years. I have great confidence in staff and the planning, and I want to see it happen. So thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to start down here at the end. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I want to thank QCI as well, and staff and city council, and also our communication staff for helping educate our public out there, because a lot of folks were very clear on which direction we were going at first, and through everybody's coordinated efforts, I think everyone received that message. And I had a lot of folks ask, "Should I come tonight?" And I said, "Are you supportive of this?" And they said, "Yes, well, you don't need to come out tonight, because what we need you to come out to is when it's time to vote. That's why we need you to come out." So don't rely on your neighbors, rely on each one of you as far as you're coming out individually and voting for this, because when this passes, then we can go ahead and move forward. This is going to be great for the city. It's not going to make us whole, but we're going to get close, it's going to close some gaps, it's going to give parity to the city, and it's a great balance. So I appreciate everybody's time and effort in this ballot measure. Thanks.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Yes, it has been a long process, but again, I'm going to echo my colleague, Councilmember Mackeldowney's comments that, you know, we had approached the QCI group, and that's when they said that they needed more time. So that tells me that there was a lot of diligence behind that. And first of all, I want to congratulate and thank the QCI members for their diligence and their efforts in bringing us to this point. And I just want to go back and just what sticks out in my mind the most is that we've heard that investing in our community, providing the programs and services for the growing population, is the best way to serve our community and to meet the community's needs. And it's the best way to achieve our vision. And so I want to extend the thanks to, again, not just the QCI members, but the city staff, my council colleagues, because we have had a lot of tough discussions, and even coming to this point this evening, we just really wanted to make sure that the citizens knew that we were working. You voted us in office, so we're working for you. So, but this doesn't come without some stress and a few, you know, sleepless nights along the way, but I just wanted to ensure that this council has thought long and hard over this and looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you for everyone coming out tonight, and thank you for everyone watching. For me, I wasn't the initial part of developing the QCI, but I did attend the outreaches. I know the countless hours that were put in, not only by the QCI, by staff, late hours after hours, just for everybody. And for me, this ballot measure is about the improvements that will happen for the city and giving the children something positive to do. I'm in full support of it, and I also want to thank everybody who was part of QCI and staff for having a vision, for not only just making sure that they were happy with the status quo, but taking this thing forward for the past couple of years. So I'm in full support. Thank you.
Mr. Teter?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I would like to thank the different staff and people involved in putting this thing together. I am very supportive of anything to do with recreation of any kind, and I am looking forward to seeing this thing pass and the people of Commerce City get what they deserved for a long time. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I also want to thank the QCI and everybody, the staff, everybody that's worked on these projects. These are things that we've been talking about, I think just about all five of these projects, for about four or five years. Four or five years ago, the economy was in the tank. Nobody wanted to talk about a tax increase, not even a one percent or a half a percent or anything else. There were several things that went on the ballot back during that time from various different governmental agencies, and they failed. So I wish this could have been done about three years ago, but I don't think that the sales tax would have passed, so I'm thinking that we're doing this at the right time and there are the right projects. And I'm going to look forward to watching these come out of the ground.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to keep my comments brief. I want to thank the members of the QCI committee, the community, staff, and my fellow council members for the long and hard work that was put forth on all these items. The list started a lot bigger than what it was now, at a lot bigger cost, but this council narrowed it down to the five items that you see now, five items, five-year, one penny. And it wasn't easy, but I really want to thank everybody that worked on it, because like Mr. Curnas said, this is for our children who are our future, but we also have to remember we're standing on the shoulders of the people of the past, and we're doing this for our seniors also. So this isn't just a one-option item, we're doing it for the past, present, and the future of our communities. And I also want to thank the members of the business community, the different citizens that didn't quite agree with this, moving this forward, because they gave us a lot to think about on that factor also. So all, I mean, I'm totally supportive of this, I hope it moves forward, and I want to thank everybody that had anything to do with it. Thank you.
Well, first, I want to thank my council colleagues for all that they endured through the process of deliberating what to do with all these requests, and what we tried to do was make sure that we were listening to the residents and taking their perspective of what needs to be done in the community to move it forward. The important pieces of the transportation with Tower Road, we've got to draw that economic development opportunities for office and manufacturing and hotels and the things we need along that corridor, and that ramp is a big piece, but it's not in here because it's already funded. We continue to work toward a resolution with the State Department of Transportation to get Highway 2 widened. I think we're getting very close, but we have other ways to fund that. So truly, we set aside some of the things that we think we can get to without having to have this kind of an increase, and we're putting something to the voters that I believe gives them the opportunity to choose if they'd like to move their community forward with their own projects and their own plans. And I believe what I've seen in the past couple of years, let alone this past week, with the neighborhood meetings and the outreaches that we did, as well as with the comments tonight that our residents are supportive of, being able to make a decision for themselves in November whether they want to put a one-cent additional sales tax on themselves and our city to be able to provide those extended services that were outlined by the residents and the businesses through the QCI. I need to thank the QCI members, all of them, and just a note that several of those members of QCI are big business owners within this community, and the use tax piece of it is going to hurt those businesses in a particular manner, but I think they also understand that by moving our services forward in our community and being more attractive to other businesses, that it's an opportunity. So I want to thank especially those businesses, but everybody that participated with QCI. I also want to thank our staff, and I think it's very important to thank our consultants, Josh and R.D., that have been helping us to put together the neighborhood meetings that we attended all of last week and spent a lot of time visiting with our residents. So our staff has done an amazing job, I can't leave them out. So thank you to all of our staff, and not only will I be supportive of this resolution, I will be voting in November to put my taxes increase as well as a resident. So I think it's great for the city, born and raised here, and I think this is the only way we can start to really move our city forward and be competitive with recreation and transportation. If we can't get people in and out of our community and have the opportunities for them to recreate, we're going to have a hard time drawing the business folks in here that need to rely upon the opportunity to get their representatives for their community out of our community, representatives for their business out of our community, and I think that's a big piece. So with that said, discussion has taken place. I'll ask the city attorney to please read the title.
Title of Resolution 2013-51 reads as follows. "Resolution Submitting to the Electors of the City of Commerce City at the Regular Election to be Held November 5, 2013. The question of whether the debt and sales and use tax of the City of Commerce City should be increased in the amount set forth in such question and setting the language therefore."
Thank you, and I know that I have the opportunity to do this as a voice vote, but I think so that the residents can see how we feel on council about putting this forward to them for a vote in November, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
One moment, sir. I'll set it up to be voted on.
Thank you. Let the record show that the resolution is passed unanimously by the eight members that are here this evening, and we all know after I read the letter how Councilwoman Carson feels about how passionate she is about this, and if she was here tonight, it would have been unanimous. So thank you, each and every one of you, for coming in tonight and playing a critical role in our community as we grow. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, ordinance is on first reading, Ordinance 1968. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one, I am open for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move the introduction of Ordinance 1968. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Mackeldowney?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the introduction of Ordinance 1968. Will the attorney please read the title?
Title of Ordinance 1968 reads as follows. An ordinance amending Sections 1-3003 and 1-3004 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code establishing general penalties and authorizing the use of certain other remedies to enforce the provisions of said code.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, the ordinance is introduced on first reading, eight in favor, one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1973. Does the council have any questions in regards to this ordinance? Mr. Bullock?
No, just for a motion, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion, Mr. Bullock.
Move the introduction of Ordinance 1973. Counsel is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teter?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of Ordinance 1973 reads, "An ordinance repealing and reenacting Articles 1 and 2, Chapter 11 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding the Model Traffic Code and adopting the 2010 addition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado by reference."
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Title's been read, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, the ordinance has been introduced, eight in favor, one excused absence. Brings us to the presentation portion of our agenda. I will ask Jim Hayes to introduce the RTD representatives, and we'll have the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually going to turn over to Mr. Kramer, our Community Development Director.
to introduce Jim Sterling from RTD.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Jim mentioned, Jim Sterling is here tonight from RTD to present an update regarding the latest with the North Metro line and what's happened. Since the last presentation that RTD has made to city council, there has been a lot of changes. I know in the past, city council and the community has been maybe frustrated by the amount of progress that's occurred with the line. Mr. Sterling is here tonight with a fair amount of updates and certainly news about the pace of the project, which I think is picking up considerably. So if you please, Mr. Sterling.
Good evening. Good evening. Thanks for having me up here. I was thinking back, sitting in the audience. It's been quite a while since I've been up here. I think it's probably 2008, the last time I was able to give an update to the council. Since that time, I moved over. I was managing the North Metro project then. Then I moved over to the West Corridor, built that, or managed that project, and came back in April when we opened up that corridor. So I'm very happy to be back on the North Metro rail line project. I'm a resident of Thornton, so live in the area. Just a quick update on the alignment. The North Metro rail line starts at Union Station, travels through Denver, Commerce City, Adams County, Thornton, and Northland, and ends up at Highway 7. So it's eighteen and a half miles. It is an electrified commuter rail system. We have eight stations, 4,000 parking spaces we're gonna add with the initial construction. It's a combination of single track and passing track locations, and I cover the areas that this will be serving. One thing I wanted to mention, earlier this year, we'd made the decision that we were going to complete final design on the corridor and put it out for a construction contract later this year. And that would have been a project to take the corridor up through 72nd. We had identified funding to complete the construction up to that point. But then in February, we received an unsolicited proposal. One of the things that RTD is really pushing is innovation, you know, led by our general manager, Phil Washington, trying to look at innovative ways to complete the entire FastTrax program. And so we received an unsolicited proposal. Our process, when we receive one of those, is to take a look at it, see if it has merit. The staff did that and recommended to our board of directors that we move forward with that. The process then is that we release a request for proposals and competitively bid what was unsolicited, the proposal that we received in. So I wanted to go over the goals that we had when we were putting together that request for proposals. Number one at RTD is always safety. Safety for the construction, safety for the traveling public, safety for the system once we start operating it. We had previously identified that we could fund up through 72nd the construction. So really, the goal of this request for proposals is to complete more of the line and look to complete the line all the way up to Highway 7. We'll be integrating with the commuter rail network that's already being constructed right now, the East Line out to the airport and the Gold Line out through Arvada. And we had completed the environmental work, so we have the record of decision that we'll be following. One of the other goals we had is our disadvantaged business goals for the project. At RTD, we have a great track record of helping small and disadvantaged businesses through our projects. That will continue with this contract as well. And we really were looking for other parts of the FastTrax program that could be completed through this RFP. I'll get into that a little bit more. So we've broken the request for proposals into three stages. It'll be, we will have a design-build contract, meaning that the contractor will finish the final design as well as perform the construction. The first phase will be Union Station up through 72nd. The second phase is from 72nd to the end of line at Highway 7. We've broken that into a couple of different milestones. 88th Avenue, 104th, East Lake at 124th, and the end-of-line station. We've done that to allow for some flexibility as we're able to identify additional funding, to be able to exercise those options to get the whole line completed. One of the things we saw through the unsolicited proposal that came in was there may be opportunities to build other parts of the FastTrax program, and specifically the three light rail extensions that are part of the program. The southeast corridor, the southwest, and there's an extension of the central corridor, which will take where it currently ends and tie it into the east corridor line going out to the airport. One of the things that we have available through the request for proposals is to add in if there's related projects along the line, that we could add those into the contract. You know, having a major contractor onboard in the neighborhood usually creates some economies of scale. This contract, as I mentioned, is a design-build contract, and so we will be awarding that based on best value and really putting an emphasis on creativity in their technical proposal and also financial creativity as well. Looking at not only how to fund the construction of North Metro to the complete end-of-line at Highway 7, but also taking a look at those extensions and if there's ways that we can have those parts of the program completed, we're looking for that as well. One point on that, though, this is a North Metro RFP that we're putting out, so the emphasis is to have the North Metro line completed all the way to Highway 7. Any proposals that we receive in for the extensions, they would need to not interfere with our ability to construct North Metro to the end-of-line. So from the time that we went to the board and they gave us the go-ahead to move forward with the RFP, and we had to put together the RFP, this is just the different volumes that we have. There's over, I think, 4,500 documents that are in this RFP. It's quite a large document that we have. And we were able to put that together in just over two months. The civil elements that are included in, again, it's a design-build, so the contractor will be responsible for everything on the corridor. So all the civil work, bridges, structures, stations. One thing we're doing a little bit differently is on the right-of-way acquisition process, we will have the contractor assist us with that. That's something that we introduced on the I-225 light rail design-build contract that's worked extremely well for us, so we'll continue that on North Metro. Systems elements, they will be responsible for all the systems elements, the signal system, the overhead wire, the communication system. So that'll all be included in just one contract. I mentioned our disadvantaged business goals. They're listed here. One thing I didn't mention earlier is our WIN program. It's the Workforce Initiative Now program. That's something that we started with the Eagle Project, really looking at providing training for people who live within the communities where we're building. We're trying to train people so that, you know, as the projects come through their neighborhood, there's opportunities for people to work on the projects who live in the areas and then leave them with skills that they can use after the projects are completed. So we have goals for those. Schedule, we released the request for proposals June 28. We had a pre-proposal briefing on July 8. And we had that at the Denver Post building downtown in their auditorium. We had over 250 attendees there. Lots of contractors interested in doing this work and working with RTD. We had received questions and met with our proposers through last Monday, April 12. We will issue a final request for proposals on August 26, which is next Monday. And then we'll receive the proposals in on September 23. We'll make our review and make our presentations to our general manager, who will make the staff recommendation to our board of directors on November 5. And the board meeting is on November 19, where we would anticipate they would give us the go-ahead to move forward on the contract. And we're looking to have, give notice to proceed to our contractor before the end of the year. One of the things I wanted to touch on is the stakeholder participation. What's real important is we're going through, looking at these proposals, that we have the feedback from our stakeholders. So from the cities, we have a representative who will be on our evaluation committee. Your representative will be Chris. He'll be on the evaluation. The RFPs will be available downtown, so he'll be spending a lot of time down, reading the proposals as they're coming through, and then providing feedback and getting that into our evaluation. One thing about that is it is a confidential process, so even if you ask him about it, he really can't tell you until November 5, when the presentation is made to the board of directors. The intergovernmental agreement. We are trying to have drafts of all the intergovernmental agreements with our final RFP that we put out next Monday. We've been making great progress with the city in coming up with an agreement that I think will work very well. So that is the quick update on the corridor, where we're going. I think, you know, last time I was here, you know, there wasn't anything going on. We were just in planning mode. And it's very exciting to see that we're actually gonna have some construction. You know, we'll be looking to issue notice to proceed before the end of the year for Phase 1, which will take us up through Commerce City. So pretty exciting time when you look back, you know, even just a few years ago with the FastTrax program. There really wasn't a whole lot going on. And since that time, you know, really at the charge of our general manager to try and be as creative as possible to get the whole program completed, we've been able to get the I-225 project under construction and now with North Metro. So it's a pretty exciting time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sterling. The mayor had to step out for a second. Is, are there any questions or comments from the council? You have to raise your hand, because I don't have this little box. Oh, okay. Mr. McAdonny?
Thanks so much, Mr. Sterling. And I think I remember that last visit you paid. And it's obviously exciting to hear the progress that's taken shape in the recent months, given where we thought things were upon your last visit. So we appreciate the update. We're obviously excited to see how this plays out and obviously eager to see somebody start laying tracks as we see taking shape through the DIA corridor and others. So thanks very much.
Appreciate that. Is there anyone else on council that would like to address? There you go. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for this update. From time to time, we sit and we wonder exactly what's going on and where it's at. And these little timely updates really come in handy for us. So thank you so much for coming in this evening and giving this update. And I always print it up to a paper form, so I can always go back and look and see exactly where we're at. But I know on November 19, that is our big target date for RTD. Thank you so much.
It'll be a very exciting night. Yes. Anyone else? Mr. Sterling, I'd like to thank you for coming in. I've been playing a very active role in our station and participating with NADA and all the other agencies. My concern is this. Number one, I wanna make sure that, because through the process of meeting with other jurisdictions, there was some talk about trying to get pieces of some of them done. My main goal is that when we get to the 72nd Avenue station, that we get the station done in whole. So I'd like to just keep that on your mind, that our goal is to not accept less than what we have coming before you move on to the next one and have to come back and make additions. So we're excited about having the transportation piece in our community and look forward to the outcome of the RFP request. And seeing no one else, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Okay. Mr. City Manager, you wanna kick off the budget presentations for this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hayes is getting the presentation started for me. We have five presentations planned for you this evening, and the city manager's office is the first presentation tonight, which I will be reviewing for you. This is the final night that we are making budget presentations to you and answering your questions in advance of city council's budget retreat, which is next Monday. The budget retreat begins at 3:00 in the afternoon. And during these department and division budget presentations, we're collecting your questions, collecting issues, concerns, things that you would like to discuss further at the budget retreat next week. So again, this is the final group of presentations tonight. Also next week, you will have a presentation from me on an overview of the entire budget. We've been presenting bits and pieces along the way over the last several weeks. Next Monday, we'll show you how the entire budget in total looks in an overview fashion. And we have been making adjustments to the budget as we've worked through the last several weeks so that I can recommend a budget to you that has mine and staff's full recommendation. So with that, I'd like to review for you the city manager's office budget as it is being proposed in the 2014 budget for next year. You'll see our budget overall is reducing slightly from what is in the 2013 approved budget. That is primarily an adjustment in the salaries line items. When we approved the 2013 budget in the fall of 2012, we still had folks in acting positions. So salaries hadn't been confirmed at that point. Now that we're ready to prepare the budget for 2014, we've filled all those key positions, have actual salary information that we can fill in. So that's why you see a change in production in that amount for 2014. We are not proposing any additional expenditures of funds. There are occasions where we've adjusted funds between different categories or line items within the city manager's office, but we've found that the resources that we have available are adequate for us to continue providing excellent service to you. Again, no additional requests or proposals for 2014. We expect to have satisfactory resources to accomplish the directives and the goals that city council has set out for us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does the council have any questions about the proposed budget for the city manager's office? Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. You make it real easy to ask questions when you don't request anything. So that's, I'm just a comment, not even a question. Thank you for that budget proposal. That was a brief fist and least fist, which I don't think is even a word that I've seen. So thank you.
That $39,000 reduction in salaries and benefits, I just was sitting here noticing how nervous Jim is next to you.
We haven't been specific yet at where those reductions are occurring. We'll talk about that later with staff.
Okay. I just, you know, wide-eyed, that deer-in-the-headlight look. It was a great, great presentation. I'm glad that you are being conservative with your budget and making things work. So thank you.
Thank you.
And the next presentation is the Economic Development Division, which is also a division within the city manager's office.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city councils. I'll try to be equal.
I'll try to be equally as brief with regards to our Economic Development Division's budget for 2014 to 2015. Overall, our budget will decrease by .84%. The Personnel Services that you see as a reduction of close to $6,200, $6,200 is a result of the change in composition of our staff. For 2014, 2015 budget, there are no special consideration requests. We are asking for an Economic Development Coordinator. This position replaces our former administrative specialist in this position at a cost to the city of $7,800. We are also requesting a budget enhancement for the Derby Resource Center of $18,000, and however, we do not have any further capital equipment requests at this time. The $7,800 that we are requesting for the Economic Development Coordinator, we're asking for City Council to bring us back to 2011 levels of staffing, and up to 2007, we have four professionals, Economic Development members on our team, and we're able to perform tasks. We experimented with an administrative specialist for the past year, year and a half, that proved not to be productive. The skill sets that we need for this position is the Economic Development Professional. That professional will be our first line of intake, be able to provide our staff data, and be able to enable us to further our mission in Economic Development Division. We're also requesting budget enhancements of $18,000. $3,400 of those dollars is attributed towards Derby Resource Center telephone and internet service. Up until last month, or up until this month, we've been living off a grant from Suncor that paid for internet and phone service, but going forward, we need to secure those dollars to provide those services at the Derby Resource Center. In addition, we're asking for $14,736 to, for the Derby Resource Center, to enable us to erect a wall for privacy. As you, many of you are aware, the Small Business Development Center operates out of the Derby Resource Center, in addition to the Adams County Workforce Development and Business Center, and they have a need on occasions for privacy to talk with their clients. That is not possible now, because there are no partitions in the Derby Resource Center. This estimate is accurate as of two months ago, and we feel that we can move forward with that number right there. Key initiatives for 2014, 2015, getting out the RFQ for the Mount High Greyhound Park. The Economic Development Coordinator will assist our team in outreach into businesses that have 50 or more employees for business retention purposes. We anticipate there will be a increase in commercial development along Tower Road once that is increased, and we need to ramp up for that, as well as working with Victory Crossing and the consultant as developer in that area. Are there any questions?
Council have any questions for Mr. Williams on the Economic Development Department? Jim? Did you raise your hand? Mr. Benson? Did you have any question?
No.
Okay. All right, no problem. Seeing no questions, thank you for the update, Mr. Williams. Okay, Brian, bring in the next one. Mr. Gaylor.
Hey.
Bless you.
All right. You going to work it from there?
No.
Okay, you got it? Okay. All right, this is the budget for the Legal Department. You'll see Personnel Services, a slight increase, $9,776. We're dealing with Deputy City Attorney and the Assistant City Attorney, and that increase is a result of evaluations that result entitlement to that change in the Personnel Services budget. Materials and Supplies, you see, remain the same. We have no indication of any need for increase of what we already are receiving in materials and supplies. You'll see Services and Charges. You'll see a reduction of $20,000 in that account, and that is due to a decision that the investigations that were previously funded out of the legal budget should, are more appropriately to be funded out of the Human Resources Budget, and that number will be reflected in the Human Resources Budget, but it results in a deduction from the, from the Legal Department budget. Career Development and cell phones, iPads, so forth, no change from what we have this year, $12,500. That's the same amount that we're budgeting for 2014. Total budget total results in a reduction of $10,224 because of the change in the charge for investigations that will no longer be paid out of the Legal Department, but instead will be paid out of Human Resources. So it results in a reduction in our budget. The proposed increase, as I've indicated, is a result of personnel costs due to successful reviews of the legal staff, and as I've indicated, the $20,000 has been removed from the Legal Department budget and will be transferred to the Human Resources Budget. Next.
That's it.
Questions?
Do you want to have any questions?
One thing I will comment on, you don't see any initiatives up there, you don't see any plans for any different services, because really, the Legal Department is reactive to the needs of the City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. So, the work in, in my department is generated by the work all of you cause to be allocated to my department and by what staff brings to my department. So, we react to your needs, and so we're not creating any additional problems. You have enough problems that, that you create and send my, our direction, rather than us creating problems. So, that's why you don't see any initiatives up here on the screen.
Well, no, there were no comments until after that last piece, Bob, about we have enough problems. I have to tell you, you kind of blamed all of your budget on us. And you know, your reviews do, and I'm still waiting for a few of them, so. Seeing no comments, thank you. And then we'll move on to Communications and Intergovernmental Relations Division. Michelle?
If I could actually provide a brief introduction to Michelle's budget, last year, and actually in the current year budget, we actually have those two functions, Communications and Intergovernmental Relations, broken into two sub areas within the city manager's office. Michelle has been filling in on a temporary basis as the Intergovernmental Relations Manager, in addition to her job as Communications Director. It's my intention to have her continue doing both functions. I think she and her team do an outstanding job, and so as a result, as part of the budget for 2014, we will be combining those two budget areas into one. For discussion purposes tonight, and to show you comparison of expenses year over year, we've combined Communications and Intergovernmental Relations for 2013, added those expenses together, so that you can get a true comparison year over year. So it's our intention, we haven't finalized some internal changes to enable Michelle to take on those duties permanently, but I'm extremely satisfied with the job she's done, performing those Intergovernmental Relations role. So again, that's the driver behind combining those two functional areas into one budget category for the 2014 budget.
Okay. So, the Division summary for Communications and Intergovernmental Relations for 2014, you'll notice there is a decrease in our Personnel Services, and there's an increase in, a slight increase in Services and Charges, but there's an overall decline in the budget for both divisions of nearly 11%. And that's broken out in the following. In terms of Personnel Services, we had a 50% administrative support, we're moving to full-time administrative support, and we're also transferring the Grants Coordinator to the Finance Department, so you'll see that reflected in Roger's updated presentation at your council retreat. We've also carried the Memorial Day Parade salaries for all of the staff, so that's also included as well. And there's some vacancies we have, and those are placed at the midpoint. In Materials and Supplies, we've seen some minor changes associated with the transfer of the position of the Grants Coordinator, just some things have moved around. And then in Services and Charges, we have a slight increase planned for 2014 postage, as again, we have that every year with the U.S. Postal Service rates, but we also have some reductions associated with the transfer of that position. We don't have any additional capital equipment, special considerations, or budget enhancement or reduction requests, and some of the key initiatives that we're working on from a communications standpoint is continuing to provide timely, accurate, and proactive notification of city events and activities. We're always looking to identify new methods to share information throughout the community, whether that be leveraging our Homeowner Association newsletters more, or those websites and social media outlets. We're always looking for ways to get our information out more effectively. We've also been working to expand the positive coverage of Commerce City in a variety of media outlets, and we're really trying to refine metrics for defining a true return on investment for programs and services and how we market them. From an intergovernmental perspective, some of the initiatives we're working on is making sure that we engage council even more to enhance our city's federal and state legislative activities, and on September 26th, during the study session, we'll talk about how we'd like to move forward with council in expanding that federal and state outreach, so I'm excited about that. We've also been expanding our outreach to the Hispanic and nonprofit communities, and you heard a presentation from my colleague Vaughn on that when I was out on maternity leave. We've also, we'll be focusing on deepening those relationships with regional, state, and federal organizations that benefit Commerce City. As Congressman Perlmutter alluded to, there's a lot of different areas that we touch, from the Environmental Protection Agency, to the Fish and Wildlife Service, to a lot of local nonprofits with the state. So, we want to further those relationships. And then also, we want to support the Youth Commission Growth and Development. That is something that is under my purview, and my colleague Julia M. Coe is the Youth Commission Coordinator, and so she's dedicated substantial time to making sure that they continue to grow and prosper. So with that, I'd open it up to any questions you may have.
Okay, I, I just have one question on, between number two and number three, both of them show dramatic decreases, but at the budget total, it shows a $17,202 increase. And maybe I, when it went by, I missed that, but I can't figure out how you have the minus $86,000, minus 100, and just the plus 2,000, and it comes up to 17,000, but there's something I must have missed.
No, I think it's actually something we've missed. I think there's some number errors on that slide. We'll update that information and send an updated slide out to council.
Okay, because I kept going back, trying to figure out if I, something wasn't on my slide, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was worried about a little padding of that budget myself. Mr. Douglas, your light was lit up?
Thank you, Michelle, for presentation. You know, on the Intergovernmental Relations piece, I know last year, you know, we had the big situation with oil and gas and all that. I think if we're going down that path for, for Intergovernmental Relations, as far as communication, I think it'd be nice, you know, council has more overall, as I see, if that's the way we're going to go, where we engage down at the Capitol and get to see what's going on, because I think having that firsthand information and having that relationship with the folks in the State House is very important. And, you know, for, you know, there's been cases where we can't go, and for that gap to be filled, that's great, but I think going down the road, we need to have more of ourselves in that Intergovernmental Relationship, because that's, that's basically what we're, where we're voted, to make sure that Commerce City is taken care of. So I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess now on to the birthday girl. How often on your birthday do you get to do a budget presentation? That's, that's an honor.
It is an honor. Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you regarding the City Clerk's Office budget. The City Clerk's Office is a division within the city manager's office. We are one of the smallest divisions in the city. We are staffed by three personnel, myself, a deputy city clerk, and an administrative assistant. You'll see a slight, a 2% increase in Personnel Services. That would be the result of positive performance for evaluations. We have no change in Materials and Supplies. Our Services and Charges also remain the same, and we are not a division that has capital outlay, so our budget remains in the $220,000 range. As far as operating requests, we have none. We have no new capital equipment, special considerations, positions, or budget enhancements. Again, we're a very small budget, and we operate very lean. We do not have any capital improvement requests, and our key initiatives are to continue to serve the council staff and our community with a high level of customer service. That is all I have.
Any questions for the City Clerk? Jason?
Thanks so much for the update, and this may have been a toss-up between you and Communications, but there's a feature of the iLegislate platform called Ideas that has, we see the tab before, we obviously don't have that feature at present, as far as I know, within our version, but it seems like a fairly intriguing tool, especially in light of our QCI effort. It looks like it's a tool that we can use to essentially help elicit community feedback and input on ideas. I know that with our website software, there's a, I think that platform also has a surveyed-like feature. I've seen other municipalities that use that same website platform do so, but it might be an interesting tool for us to consider in, in an effort to kind of continue in that sort of community survey approach, where we take key problems, we take key decisions, and not to the point of putting everything out to a survey, but using it in a, in a targeted and measured way to help gather feedback. It might be one of those things that, I don't know what the cost is, it may be something that's a very reasonable cost, but it might be an additional tool to, to consider adding to the toolbox, so to speak, to help with, with future decision-making, so.
Thank you. We did look at that. I believe there was a considerable budget consideration to it, but again, I believe notes are being taken, and it's certainly the staff can look at and have that, that figure available to you for your budget retreat.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Great, thank you. The only question I had, Laura, is how is the passport piece going since you've added that? Still a positive piece for our City Clerk's Office?
Yes, thank you. It continues to be a very positive service that we are providing to the community, and it is growing, has grown, it grew slightly in the first, first two quarters, but I believe it is leveling out some. Those figures are provided for you in your monthly, in your quarterly updates. It isn't the, the revenue generator that we had hoped, I think, a few years ago, but I think the service that it provides to the community is really a benefit. We, even though the post office is real close, we continue to see walk-in traffic, and I would tell you that we probably, on an average, see approximately would tell you that we probably, on an average, see approximately, process approximately two passport applications a day. And I know that, that does not sound like a lot, but there are days when we have, again, that's an average over the month, and we have days where families come in, and we might serve two, three, four families at a time. I think our record number of, of processes was about fifteen applications that we have processed in one day. So again, it is, I think it's a great benefit to the community. We hear a lot from people that come to see us that they really enjoy the fact that they don't have to make a reservation like they do, or an appointment like they do with the post office. They appreciate the fact that they don't have a stand-in line for three or four hours like they do at the post office. They consider it a little hidden jewel that we have here in the city.
I appreciate it. I know it's working out well and is a good service, so thank you. Okay, that concludes our presentations. The next item on the agenda is Administrative Council business. I do know of one item, which is a request to the council to allow me to sign a letter, if need be, between now and September 16th, because we won't have any regular council meetings between now and then. So I would ask for a motion, and the letter would, go ahead, Bob.
The letter would be to Adams County regarding use of the Adams County Jail.
Correct, say that. Mr. Bullock?
Move. Move to approve the mayor signing the letter, if need be, between now and the next regular council meeting.
Okay, Mr. McElhany?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Is there any other Administrative Council business to come before the council? Mr. McElhany, your lights on? No? Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I had a request from the Metro Denver Area Veterans Initiative Forum for us to sign a proclamation that's going to come forward to help veterans throughout the Metro Denver area with needs that are needed to veterans, homes, work, meals, anything that can assist any veterans. The proclamation is being forwarded to me, and I will get it to the city staff, and probably on the meeting of the first meeting of September, that proclamation, if it's, will be brought before council, so they can see it and see if they would like to sign this. But I don't want you to be caught flat-footed and wondering what this is. So if you see any proclamation, and it might have other cities' names in it that are being also asked to sign it, but anything you'd want to do to change the proclamation, just make changes on it and get it back to the city staff, so if it's something we want to do, we can move forward in September with signing this proclamation. Thank you.
Any other Administrative Council business? Seeing none, I'll go into reports. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City staff did distribute to you this week's City Manager's Report. We have a number of items that were, were council requested that we follow up, concerns about site distance at 62nd and Holly, concerns about the traffic signals at 60th and Parkway, concerns about property on East 60th Place. We have addressed all of those. And then we also included an update regarding some restructuring that we're doing in the Community Development Department. Patrick Buckley, who's the city's building official, has agreed to take on the additional role of managing our Neighborhood Services Division, and will continue reporting to Chris Kramer, so we've got some information and a little bit more detail about that in the City Manager's Report for tonight. As always, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. Mr. Bullock, you have a question?
Mr. City Manager, that 62nd and Holly is taken care of. There is already there a no right turn on a red sign there, because the site distance between the front of the intersection and those bushes, even though they're far enough back, you still cannot see far enough down Holly Street to make a safe turn. So they already installed a no right turn on red that everybody runs anyway, because nobody knows it's there, because everybody's so used to doing it. But after a couple of tickets, they'll know.
The other issue that we noticed there is some shrubs at the intersection, overhanging, causing some additional problems with site distance, so we will be asking the property owner there to do some basic maintenance to those bushes.
Okay, Mr. McElhany?
Thank you. I submitted an item earlier, and I appreciate you quickly getting, it was convenient to have the, the folks from United Power here tonight to contend with that lightbulb issue. I had another item that just ran through my mind that I failed to send you guys on email last meeting, and I don't know if perhaps it's been addressed already. I encountered a heaved section of sidewalk on the south side of 104th. It's essentially the sidewalk just east of the ramp, the sidewalk ramp there behind 711. Problem is that's, it's essentially the only way that you can go on your bicycle, if you're trying to get to 711, or get up to Stewart, or Second Creek Middle School, or Elementary School from 104th, and it's one of those sweet spots where the sidewalk is heaved up pretty significantly. So if somebody's coming in with any, with any speed and tries to stop, it's situated so it's a very difficult turn, and that's a fairly narrow section of sidewalk right there, because it's not the wide trail side of the road. So with all those factors, it would be great if we could get that looked at. Thank you, guys.
Good. Mr. Gallagher?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to start off my reports by saying I have received almost all of the evaluation forms for the City Manager, City Attorney, and the Judge. I am missing Mr. Benson's and Mr. McElhany's, and Councilwoman Elliott has hers, so I would just ask that you try to get that to me as soon as you can, if you haven't turned yours in yet, so I can get the process moving forward, so that we can make sure we take care of our obligations to those departments. Now for my reports. Many of us attended the ballot proposal outreach at Stewart Middle School, also had Rotary Neighborhood Outreach at Fairfax Park, participated in the Rotary Golf Tournament with Councilman Teeter, ballot proposal outreach at Worth Manor, ballot outreach for the business outreach here at the city, ballot outreach for the QCI Stakeholder Group here at City Hall, Rotary again. Many of us attended the Station Area Master Plan Community Outreach that was here at City Hall. Also had a meeting that the council had asked me to have with Commissioner Tedesco, and then there were several of us here for Officer Artega's retirement ceremony, and I want to wish him well on his future endeavors. And then Rotary Golf. Oh, Mr. Amador and Mr. Douglas were also with me. Thanks, Mr. Bullock. I remember the picture now. I do need to thank Mr. Bullock. While I was at the Rotary Golf Tournament with some of my other colleagues, he handled two of the outreaches, the business outreach, as well as the outreach over at the Rec Center. So I appreciate you covering for me on those two outreaches. Then I had an exciting weekend. I spent Friday night from approximately 10:30 till a little after midnight, following up on some noise complaints that I received Friday evening about the event centers that we have here in the community. There was a complaint about a band or an activity taking place in a garage, also Tammy's Event Center, Luna Event Center, Eclipse Event Center, and the Idolwise Club. And so I did drive into town. I spent quite a bit of time over at the Luna and the Eclipse facility. The time that I was there, the parking lot was pretty much empty. There was two rows of cars against the building on the east side. The front of the parking area in front of the Eclipse was pretty full. The noise was down, very, very low noise. I couldn't hear it off the property, that's for sure, and I stayed there for quite a long time. I did drive over to the Idolwise Club. The parking lot was completely full of cars. However, I parked right up next to the building, got out, did not have any music at all that I could hear. I could hear the crickets and everything else chirping, so I didn't see any noise problems there. It did seem to be busy. And then I went back over to the Luna and Eclipse Event Centers, as well as past Tammy's, and I didn't see, there was no noise issues, there was no people out in the parking lots. It was pretty calm. However, I did receive a call again Saturday morning about the fact that I probably wasn't there at the right time, because there was some activity about cars racing up and down the streets, noise. So I did agree that I would go back out Saturday night. I went out Saturday night, I went out about 10:30. I stayed until after 1 o'clock. I looked at all the same facilities. Again, Idolwise was full of cars, no music. Eclipse and Luna, the same scenario as Friday night, the parking lot was calm, there wasn't people out there hanging out, there wasn't music in the parking lot. I could hear a little bit of the bass, but I was right up against the building. I couldn't hear the music off the property. I did notice that as some folks were leaving after midnight, there were a few cars that kind of sped out of there, which, you know, I know the business can't control the driving of the patrons, however, maybe we need to have, you know, police check it out around that time that people are leaving those facilities. Other than that, there was one car that pulled in that had loud music coming from his car. As soon as he parked and went in, the music stopped, but for the most part, it was very uneventful and quiet. I also went past Tammy's. Tammy's had nothing going on at all, was closed for the evening. Idolwise, same scenario, packed with cars. There was a tour bus there, but I could hear no music at all. I did go ahead and drive the area up around Willow Street, around through the trailer park area where the people had the complaints at the Worth Manor outreach that we had about noise and some other concerns that were coming out of that trailer park. I went through there both nights, Friday and Saturday. Everything was extremely calm and quiet throughout those neighborhoods, so I just wanted to let the council know. I followed up on those complaints, and again, maybe, maybe things are bad before I got there and after I left, but while I was at the, at those facilities, I did not see any violations, or I would have called them in, and I would invite any of my colleagues on this council, if they are up for it, when, when one of those type of complaints come in, if they'd like to go out and spend the evening with me, driving around and just kind of keeping an eye on what's happening within all of our community. And over the weekend, it seemed like everything was in pretty good shape. I did videotape at every facility I was at Saturday night, so that you could, you could hear whether there was music or not, and you could see the amount of cars that were in the parking lot and all that kind of stuff. So I would make that available to the council as well. But just some follow-up on some complaints, try to, to make sure that there's not violations occurring, and if there are, that they get turned in. But this weekend, I couldn't find any violations that I needed to call the police on. With that said, if there's no further business, did you have something, Steve? You want to add to my report? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, before I came here tonight, I sent over to the Connors State Services over there, City Service Building, and BPR, Progressive Bikes, were giving a presentation to our staff, so I appreciate them coming out, making that trip out to Colorado. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Amador, you have something?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did receive those comments and complaints from citizens as well, and I will gladly take you up on any other further site visits, just to put those issues to bed. And under also reports, I did receive an endorsement from the Denver Area Labor Federation, just so that everyone knows. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other additions to the report by the council? Seeing none, if there be no further business to come before the City Council, we'll let our city clerk get to her birthday dinner. All those in, good night. I was going to say, all those in favor, we're done, but I guess I'm getting tired too. So thank you. Have a good evening. Happy birthday. [inaudible] .................................